Okay, City Clerk, are we all ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Thank you so kindly. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the San Bruno City Council for October the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, called to order at five P M. And may we please ask the City Clerk to take role.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Next will be public comment for items on the on the agenda. Just as a reminder, today is a public hearing in regards to the transition to district-based elections. So other than that, if there's something that, other than that topic, somebody from the audience or public wishes to speak, please raise your hand at this time and we'll bring you into the room. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the topic of tonight's meeting, which is to hold a public hearing and provide information regarding the process of transition to district-based elections for council members. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our City Manager to provide some introductory remarks. And then we also, of course, have the District Elections Consultant and other staff that will be available. Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor Medina, members of the City Council. Javon Grogan, your City Manager. We are here for the second of six public meetings on the City of San Bruno's process to convert to district elections. There will also be two public workshops. This process, as the City Council knows, will go until March of twenty-second, March twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-two. Tonight's presentation will be provided by Kristen Parks from N D C. Also available tonight is City Attorney Mark Zapparano, myself, Assistant City Manager Jennifer Brazil, as well as Assistant to the City Manager Jennifer Deanos, all of which make up the internal team that are supporting this project.
City Manager, you went on mute. You're back.
All right. In addition, we have Jennifer Nitwigg from Tri Pepe Smith, who is the city's public engagement consultant that is helping this effort. I will now turn it over to Kristen Parks from N D C to provide the presentation. For the City Council, some of this will be a repeat. Tonight's presentation will begin with a little bit of the information that you've seen before, but we want to make sure that anyone that is tuning in for the first time really receives the full complement of information about district elections, some of the data that you saw in your first public hearing. And then tonight, we're going to go into detail on the district mapping tools. Kristen, take it away.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Parks. I am a consultant with National Demographics, and I am joined by my colleague Jennifer Nitwigg, who is a consultant with Tri Pepe Smith. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so that you all can see our beautiful PowerPoint. And I am just going to start by giving everyone an overview. I know for members of the council and the mayor, this will be a bit of a review. As this is our second districting public hearing, we are well along the way in this process, and it is going to fly by. But if you are just tuning in for the first time and just starting to engage with it, this is the perfect time to start paying attention and think about where you may want district boundaries for your neighborhood or your community. So to members of the public, thank you for being here, and we do hope to hear from you throughout this process. So just as a reminder, what this change represents for the City of San Bruno is a change from an at-large election system in which every voter in the city has the chance to elect all city council members. What we're changing to is a by-district election system, which means that voters within each district will elect one council member to represent their district. And that council member will also be required to live within the district they represent. So this decision was actually made by resolution of the council back in two thousand and twenty. And now that we have two thousand and twenty data from the census, we can effectively begin to draw potential district lines. So I also want to point out to members of the public that one of the things that we've seen over the past several years across the state of California is a lot of cities switching to by-district elections because they either were received a letter threatening a lawsuit under the California Voting Rights Act, or like San Bruno, they decided to proactively take the step to make that change to avoid what could be potentially very costly litigation for the city. So San Bruno has proactively made that change. There is no lawsuit. There is no threat of that currently. So that is a positive. And what that means is that we do have a little more time to deliberate throughout this process rather than having a lawsuit clock ticking. So as San Bruno is making this transition, we want to remind everyone in the public that San Bruno currently has a directly elected mayor and a city council with four members. So it is currently proposed that when this transition is occurring, there will be four districts created, one district for each city council member. And this would, of course, the first election that would take place with these by-district elections would be in November of two thousand and twenty-two, and the mayor would remain elected at large as that was established by Proposition F, a measure by the voters in nineteen seventy-seven. So this is just a visual representation for those who may be more of visual learners, right? This is something I believe that the City Manager created for us that just illustrates what it will look like after the transition. So in that November two thousand and twenty-two election, the city will be split into four council districts, and each council district will elect one council member. However, as the red circle indicates, the mayor of this city will still be elected at large. I'm going to pass it for this slide over to my colleague Jennifer.
Awesome, thank you, Kristen. And good evening, councilmembers. As Kristen mentioned, my name is Jen Nitwigg with Tri Pepe Smith. And tonight, I'm happy to chime in on a few slides that touch on the outreach and engagement involved in this process. And we'll go from there. So at this point in the process, as you can see on this slide, we are really going to be starting to push for community feedback and participation, and it's important for everyone to think about why should community members care? So fundamentally, as we can all imagine, democracy just works better when people are engaged. So being engaged means that community members are aware of the issues, and they're weighing in on the important matters that factor into how the city is run. And second, there are things that your residents just know best about their communities. And so it's essential that those of us involved in the process hear from them about the community. And then lastly, this is a once-in-a-decade opportunity, since the census data is released only once every ten years. And so every ten years, communities get together and talk about demography. And so this is an exciting time and a rare time as your community to be working through this process. And then on the next slide, here are some of the goals in the districting process. And through the districting process and events like tonight's hearing, we're going to learn from the experts, particularly Ms. Kristen Parks from N D C as your demographer. And this is a complex process, we all realize, particularly since it only comes up once every ten years usually. So it's an opportunity to educate and explain to the public what this process is and why it's so important. Then, once you've shared information on how the process works, it's important for the experts to hear from the community. Community members will be the stars of the show as the process moves forward. And it's important for the experts to hear from community members because, as we mentioned earlier, community members do know their communities best. And effective districting relies on identifying the neighborhoods and communities that you want to keep together as you consider drawing district lines. And I think Kristen will touch on that a little bit as we move forward tonight, too. And then last but not least, our goal is that community members are empowered to give effective feedback. So by absorbing the content that we'll be sharing today and by talking with our friends and neighbors, those are all great ways to participate and to provide effective feedback to inform the process that will determine district lines for the next ten years. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Kristen to touch on the timeline.
Thank you, Jennifer. So one of the things that has affected everyone going through districting or redistricting right now are significant delays, month-long delays that we had in the release of census data from the federal government. That data was released on August twelfth to the state. However, the state of California then processed that data to make some reallocations and, for instance, counting state inmates at their last-known place of residence rather than in their incarcerated location. So that was supposed to happen on September twentieth. It actually happened on September twenty-seventh. So even the state had a bit of a delay. In the districting process, there are four hearings that are required prior to adoption of the map. So tonight, we're at our second initial hearing. And just so members of the public are aware, these first two hearings are meant to be time where the council is listening to the public. We are actually not legally permitted to be considering actual draft maps yet. We will be holding two community workshops in November to demo the public mapping tools, some of which are already available on this website, districtingsanbruno.org. And these are available for the public to already get started and submit their their maps. What happens then is that after the public has ample time to to submit all of their submissions, then it will come back to the council for consideration. And so the the second two hearings that will take place in January and February are hearings where the council will consider draft maps submitted by the public and potentially also submitted by N D C. The public will have a chance then to weigh in on those maps before the final map is adopted. And what we are planning right now is for there to be a fifth hearing on March eighth and a sixth hearing on March twenty-second. That gives ample time for this map to be adopted. And all of the data of where voters are and where district boundaries are can then be shared with the county registrar of voters so that everything is in place for the November two thousand and twenty-two election. So this will be an ongoing process. This is why we say this is the perfect time to be jumping in and starting to engage with it. I encourage everyone to visit, if they haven't already, districtingsanbruno.org. The full schedule, along with links to all of the materials from the meetings that we've previously held and the upcoming meetings, as soon as those materials are available, will be posted on the schedule page of Districting San Bruno. So the other thing that helps empower the public is to understand the legal requirements that exist for districting. And so these requirements help us understand what we should consider when we're considering where district lines should be within the city. So always, first and foremost, we have federal law. And federal law says that each district should have relatively equal population, meaning that each city council member should represent about the same number of residents. That's the first consideration. Next, we want to be sure we're complying with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which says that district boundaries should be drawn in a way that takes care not to discriminate or dilute the voting power of protected classes of voters. Members of the public often ask, what are those protected classes of voters? And those are African-American voters, Asian-American voters, Hispanic voters, and Native American voters. So we will be looking at race and ethnicity in order to ensure that compliance. However, we will also be looking at other demographic factors to help define and identify the communities and neighborhoods that will be grouped together within each city council district. Federal law says that race or ethnicity should never be the sole factor or the predominant factor in drawing a district. So while we're going to look at it, we're also going to look at other data points as well. Those, that's what we're dealing with with federal law. Then we also have state law. And in the state of California, there is a new law, the Fair Maps Act, passed in two thousand and nineteen that gives us a list of criteria that we must consider when drawing district boundaries. Again, the reason this is helpful is because we are encouraging members of the public to actually draw their own proposed district maps for San Bruno. So if you're going to sit down at your desk at home and draw a district map, these are the criteria that you will want to think about so that your map has a chance of being legally compliant. And in fact, it's not unusual for cities to end up adopting a map that was drawn by one of its residents. So the first thing that you'll want to think about is making sure that each district is geographically contiguous. What that means is when you're drawing a district, you're drawing one complete district that is connected, all parts of it are connected. There is no disconnected island that you are trying to put in that district. So that has to do with the shape. That's the pretty basic criteria. The second criteria is the one we're going to focus on tonight, which is when we're drawing district boundaries, the state of California says we should minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. So as I mentioned, each district, we can think of each district as being a collection of neighborhoods and communities. What we don't want to do is to draw those district boundaries right through the middle of neighborhoods or communities and divide them up. That reduces their ability to elect representatives to the council and reduces their ability to interact with council members and even know who may represent them. The third criterion under California law is that those district lines should be easily identifiable. You shouldn't have to be a demographer or have any special software technology to know where your city council district ends and where the next one begins. So when we're drawing districts, we try to draw them in a logical fashion so the boundaries are following along waterways or major roads or anything that will be familiar to the public. The fourth criterion under California law is that districts should be compact. So when we're thinking about compactness, we're also thinking sometimes about shape. And some of the stranger-shaped districts that you may have seen in other places are not compact. What compactness is defined as under state law is that your district is not bypassing or avoiding including a particular area so that it can reach farther away to include a more distant area, right? If you did that, you end up sometimes with very strange-shaped districts. However, the list of California criteria is rank ordered, meaning that number one, two, and three on this list are more important than number four, right? So we're actually going in order of importance here. So sometimes, some of my clients will have a city council district that may have a strange shape. It's contiguous, but it may be strange. And that is because it is required to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, right? So all of these criteria we are, under California law, we're doing to the extent practicable. That is what the law says. We're going to do our best. Finally, I do have a third column here. Because every city is unique, and every city may have other goals for districts that they want to bring to the table. Some cities want every district to touch their downtown business area so that there is this shared sense of unity around their downtown, right? So the point I want to make here is that it's absolutely legally permissible to discuss other goals for our districts in San Bruno. However, we can only discuss or consider these other goals after we've already addressed the criteria given by federal and state law. So all of that being said, I myself am not an attorney. So if we have any legal questions, we will be asking those to to the attorney. But I do think it's empowering for members of the public to understand the legal framework because it is something that we will be coming back to. And when we look at draft maps, we're going to talk about whether or not those maps meet these criteria. So the good news, of course, is despite the months and months of waiting for census data, we now have it. And so for the City of San Bruno, in the two thousand and twenty census, forty-three thousand nine hundred and eight people were counted. And what you see here are citywide some of the demographic features that the Census Bureau has has provided. What we're really concerned with here is figuring out how many people should each of the districts that we create for San Bruno have. So the blue box here that says ideal district size, what that is, is, well, we're going to take the total population of the city, and then we're going to think about the number of districts we're going to create, which, there are four districts that we're going to create. There are four council members currently on council. And so if you take forty-three thousand nine hundred and eight and you divide it by four, you're going to get this ideal number, which is ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven people. Each district doesn't have to be exactly that ideal size. What we're looking for is a total deviation of less than ten percent. So we're looking for each of our districts to try for that ideal and get get as close as possible while also making sure that we're addressing all of the legal criteria that I just went over. So I am going to go very quickly through these slides as I have presented them previously. But these slides show you mapped out for the City of San Bruno where different populations are. So each of these slides will show you a heat map where we're going from purple being zero to ten percent of those census blocks, which is what the level at which we're displaying this data. So zero to ten percent for the purple are Latino citizens of voting age. The VAT stands for Citizen Voting Age Population. So these are our citizens over the age of eighteen. These are our eligible voters who identify as Latino. Of course, and the heat map goes from the purple, cold, to the red, hot. And so those red blocks are where you see seventy-five to one hundred percent of the of the people on those blocks are Latinos of citizen voting age. Why do we look at things like this? Well, one, for compliance with the Voting Rights Act. And two, so the members of the public can start to think about their own communities of interest and start to identify on a map where people that they share common interests with are in the city. So as you can see on this slide, for African-Americans, there's not a lot of variance from block to block. However, I want to caution and say that this map is not showing that there are no African-Americans in the City of San Bruno. It's just showing that there are, in most of the city census blocks, there are ten percent or fewer African-American citizens of voting age, okay? You can see that the Asian-American citizens of voting age are dispersed throughout the city. And there there are certain groupings in certain areas. And keeping in mind, too, one of the things to think about when we're looking at these maps is that we are ultimately going to be drawing four council districts. So it's always helpful. I, of course, I love looking at maps. We can, you can look at this data on the website on an interactive review map. So that's part of why I'm going to go through it very quickly is because this is available to the public to look at on your own time. Just click Interactive Review Map, and you can look at all of this data. Children at home, where are renters versus homeowners in the city. And then I want to circle back to that second criterion required by California law, which is that our district boundaries should minimize the division of our neighborhoods and communities of interest. Most folks are familiar with what a neighborhood is. Our state law was written to say neighborhood and communities of interest and then defines communities of interest as a population that shares common interests and should be included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. This is a very broad definition of a community of interest. And it really creates an opportunity for residents of San Bruno who may or may not think of themselves as being a traditional neighborhood but may be a group of people with common interests or common concerns or common issues that they may interact with the city on. And if they are geographically concentrated in a certain area and wish to be included within a single city council district, so they have one council member representing them, they have an opportunity to give testimony and input about their community, identify it to the council so that when we are evaluating draft district maps, we can take care to try not to divide your community across multiple council districts. So that is, that's sort of the basic definition of communities of interest. But there's really no wrong way to define your community, and we do want to hear from you as to your neighborhoods and your communities of interest. So again, just two things to think about if you are going to make public comment either tonight during the public hearing or in the future. Think about what brings people together in your community. If there's places where parks that that people go to, if there's schools, if there's places of worship, shopping centers that people frequent. And then where is the boundaries of this community? So that we can know when we look at a map how to avoid dividing up that community. Not all communities are going to care about whether or not they are in a single city council district. We particularly want to hear about your community if it does want to be within a single council district. However, we'll we'll be happy to listen to whatever testimony you bring. Other things to think about are transit corridors, school attendance zones, zoning areas. Anything that resonates with you and your neighbors are, it's helpful information, especially since we are drawing these district boundaries for the first time. You really are going to be a part of history here because the boundaries that are adopted through this process, as my colleague Jennifer mentioned, will be in place for the next decade. So there is, this is a very significant process for the city. So yes, we are in October two thousand and twenty-one. We are expecting our online mapping tool to be made live this week. However, District R, the software vendor, is having some significant delays. So that is not currently available, the thing you see a screenshot of here. However, we want the public to be able to sit down and start drawing maps right now if they want. So what we have are printable PDF maps up on the website. And just as a reminder, that website is districtingsanbruno.org. And that's where you'll find the paper maps, right? That you, and you don't have to print them and draw them on paper. You can, you know, edit the PDF on your computer, and you can draw your neighborhood, your community of interest, what your ideal council district would look like. Or you can draw a map of, that takes the City of San Bruno and you, and draws all four districts. and you and draws all four districts onto it. Whatever you submit will be entered into the public record and will be considered um by the council as part of this process. So uh for full transparency purposes, um all maps drawn and submitted by the public will be posted online. Um, and NDC will process those maps and produce demographic reports for each of the maps submitted by the public as well as um a a quick um determination as to whether or not the map meets those legal criteria that I talked about. So uh we while we encourage using these mapping tools and we provide them in order to empower the public, at the end of the day, you know, you can draw a map on a napkin or a a scrap piece of paper. And as long as you're labeling it uh with landmarks or streets, um, we can take it and and enter that into the public record. So I'm going to pass it back over to Jennifer here.
All right. And as Kristen mentioned, you know, the public mapping tools are available. And so we're looking for that public engagement, um the paper with the paper maps for sure at this point. And so with that, there's a lot of outreach that I know that the city of San Bruno is committed to to um make sure that everyone does have the opportunity to learn about this process and make their voice heard. So I won't do as detailed of a rundown as I shared during the September twenty eighth first hearing where we had a whole presentation devoted to outreach. But I'll just give you a high level summary to kind of give you a recap of some of those items. So as we've kind of touched on throughout the presentation tonight, San Bruno does have a dedicated website, um districtingSanBruno.org, which I'll show on the next slide. But on that website, if you're able to visit, you'll see the opportunity to visit the Draw on Map page with many of the tools we discussed tonight. There is a contact tab where you can send any feedback directly through the site. And there's a subscribe tab where you can subscribe for ongoing news and updates about the process. So um that's a great resource and it will be continually updated as the process moves along. We're also working with the city to send emails to email subscribers, to the city's updates and to send send direct emails to community groups. And we have social media about the process going up in multiple languages about once a week on San Bruno's social media platforms. And we have media outreach going on via press releases about the process. We have a segment on districting scheduled to air on CityNet, what's happening around town coming up um in October or ongoing in October. And we have some print flyers that are currently in work and we'll get those printed and distributed to various community groups and locations across the city. And then we do have several community workshops coming up as we've touched on, including a virtual workshop coming up on November first and then an additional workshop. And it looks like that will be in mid-November and we'll be announcing that date and time once it's finalized. And we really do encourage everyone to share this information with your friends, your family members, your neighbors, so that we can continue to get more and more engagement and help inform the process. So then on our last slide, or second to last slide, I should say. Um, this is the second to last slide, so before we open it up for the hearing portion and questions and answers, um, these are the questions that we encourage community members to consider to provide feedback and to be prepared to participate in the process moving forward. So I won't read through each of those, but these are the things we'll want to get feedback on. And then um on that last slide, um now before we open it up for any questions or comments, I'll emphasize one last time how community members can share their thoughts and continue engaging in the process. So here's that screenshot of the website, districtingSanBruno.org. You can sign up for updates via that subscribe tab as I mentioned, share your thoughts directly via the contact tab and review meeting materials on the calendar tab and explore all the other tabs on the website as well. And you can email us at any time by emailing districting@SanBruno.ca.gov. And you're welcome to join the first community workshop coming up on November first at seven PM. And we really hope to see you there. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you once again for the presentation and the information that you provided for us. Um, as we said, this is a public hearing, so what I would like to do is open the public hearing to any members of the public that wish to speak in case they um have places they and things they need to attend to. If there's any members of the public that would like to ask questions or have comments, now would be the time in which to please raise your hand. Seeing no members of the public at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion of second to close a public hearing.
I move.
Second. Motion made, seconded Salazar Hamilton to close public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Hi.
Councilmember Mason.
Hi.
Councilmember Salazar.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Hi.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. So at this time, I'd bring it to my colleagues and see if they have questions on the presentation. There we go. Uh, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and uh thank you, Jennifer and Kristen, for your presentation. Um, for the first um community workshop that's in person, just wanted to clarify that.
The first one on November first is virtual.
It's virtual, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, and possibly the second is depending on what the county says, but is that intended currently to be virtual?
We are still kind of nailing down the DITC locations sometimes, but it it looks like it might be able to be in person is my latest understanding.
No problem. It's it's a very dynamic uh uh life that we're dealing with COVID, so that's that's totally understandable. Um, I really don't have too many questions. I just wanted to clarify for that. Um, it's an interesting process. Um, and just hoping that uh more people are able to participate. Um, this was a little difficult today, um being at five o'clock, I think, and and people are just kind of scrambling around. But um, um, looking forward to that outreach to make sure that we get as many uh people engaged as possible. Um, this is so huge in in determining San Bruno's his uh future, right? So uh um, I look forward to it. It's 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 very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Mason, please.
Yeah, I just um, I want to say I appreciate the enthusiasm that you bring to your presentation. It's kind of, it can be a dry subject, but very impactful. I um, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. The first question is just around in your experience in the districting. What have you seen as the the biggest obstacle that cities face um in this process?
Yeah, um, that's an interesting question. I think that oftentimes it it can be a very difficult process when cities are dealing with a lawsuit that forces them um because that does come with a ninety-day clock, right? So in that regard, San Bruno is lucky that we do have a little bit more time, that this has been very intentional uh and proactive as a process. Um, I would also say that, you know, one of my other clients, for instance, is the town of Woodside, who is switching to districts. And um, there are other clients in similar situations that are so small that when you take, you know, a community that's so tiny, like five thousand people, and you're trying to break it up, that can be very difficult. Um, San Bruno, I think to your benefit, you do have some um freeways and other sort of natural dividing lines, things that you can think about. You do have some distinct neighborhoods. So um, that's really going to be not the challenge, um, but I think really the focus of of this process will be i- identifying, um, you know, where are those natural places for districts? And Jennifer, please feel free to to add from your experience as well.
I actually agree with all your points, so right on.
Do you find that um districts and what you've read and your experience give uh give way to additional, or I should say enough candidates per district?
Yes, and again, that's usually a uh a concern that the smaller jurisdictions have. Um, they they will always ask if it's a jurisdiction of a few thousand people, what if we don't have anyone running? Of course, the answer, if you don't have anyone running for that seat, is that then the council will appoint someone uh to fill that seat, right? Um, I don't anticipate that happening in San Bruno, but that is, you know, that is, there there is a way to fill it. We're not going to end up with empty, empty seats. Again, um, city council elections are staggered as well, so we're never dealing with our entire council being up for election in the same year. So that also helps in terms of making sure that there's an adequate candidate pool.
Yeah, I know, um, some of the information I've read says it also makes it more affordable and more reasonable for candidates to run. And I'm curious to know, the the other side of it is, um, does it also allow for additional candidates to be introduced um when you have such a a small district with the likelihood of a long-term in happening?
Yeah, um, that's that's an interesting, interesting question. Uh, I'm not sure I know what the academic literature says on on the long-term question there. But certainly, um, we do know and we can sort of see this from when the California legislature switched to term limits. Whenever there's an open seat, um, we do actually usually see candidates running more women, uh more minorities, more people that we might not otherwise see running for office. And um, the point that the the council member makes is absolutely true. When you do switch to districts, the cost of campaigning is usually uh lower because if you're sending out campaign uh mailers or something like that, you do have um a quarter of what you might normally uh spend on. So, yeah, I mean, and it's important to just be aware that that there are pros and cons to to all of these things. Um, but that this decision was made and um we are moving forward with it. And I know that the city has, you know, many other questions about how they're they may want to make changes to to their government going forward. And, you know, taking all of this step by step, I think it is very important. And you have an excellent staff and team uh working with you to help you untangle all of these uh intricacies. So we are focused on four, four city council districts, and we're going to be able to do it.
And um, I think just because I think part of having the discussion, having a public hearing, right, is to learn about these and the anticipated and unanticipated consequences of the change. And so the cities that you work with um are the, do you know, or most of those cities, um, do most of the cities already have term limits built into their cities when they move to district elections?
There's, that totally varies, yeah. And NDC is currently working uh in twenty twenty-one with over a hundred and fifty cities, council, uh cities, counties, and special districts across California. Um, and so we see every, every variation, right? Um, so again, that is, that is a totally separate issue.
Separate but connected, I would say. Separate but connected. Um, the other question is, uh, when you talk about the four districts, so so this item is not going to the voters, um, and we're having this conversation. Is that uh four districts something that at this point we can talk more about um those options? Or are we at four districts and the council is that that's set, there's not going to be a fifth district, a seventh district, that we're at four districts? And how, you know, how is that decision cemented?
Yeah, so what that um decision is based on is that Proposition F that establishes a uh mayor, directly elected mayor and four council members, right? So that has been in place since the nineteen seventies for San Bruno. There is a potential situation in which um additional council seats could be considered. Um, but that is something that requires some historical research into how Proposition F got on the ballot and whether it was we're getting into legal weeds here. So for anyone in the public who's like, what is going on? This is, this is very much in the weeds of this. Um, but I do want to give the complete answer to the best of my knowledge. Um, and certainly, uh, Mark can chime in if necessary. But my understanding is, um, if under the California Voting Rights Act, there is a compelling reason to have more than four seats, uh whether or not that's even possible as part of this process depends on whether uh Proposition F was referred to voters by the council or brought by a petition of residence. So I don't know the answer to that. Uh, we can certainly follow up and let you know more about that. But my expectation as your consultant is that four districts um is something that is reasonable for the city of San Bruno and that we should not uh expect to have any compelling reason to have more than four at this time.
And and would that recommendation change if we were, if we had a rotating mayor system, which is something that this council has discussed? And we're actually, you know, it's essentially parallel to, it's happening parallel to this districting conversation?
Yeah, I understand that that conversation is happening parallel at uh however, I think for the purposes of districting, um, that if you did make that change, you would need to, if we adopt four council districts through this process and then the change is made, you would have to uh redraw the boundaries, right, to to incorporate another district into the map, right? Um, that is costly uh in terms of of, you know, making a change after you've already invested so much into it. However, it's understandable that that may be what's best for the city. Um, even though it's sort of being talked about concurrently, um, to my understanding, that is something that would happen, that would not go into effect until after this process is completed. Um, so I don't believe that we can take into account the potent, does that make sense? The potential that that change might be made soon after uh the map is adopted. You know, I don't think we can take into consideration that possibility uh and anticipate it, unfortunately.
Yeah, because the way, I guess the way that it would work now, being the only city in the peninsula with an a directly elected mayor, would be that one district would actually then receive forty percent of any, any vote at any council meeting. Right? Because they'd be represented by the mayor who lives in that particular district along with the council member elected in that district. Is that right?
Yeah, if the mayor is is a voting member of the council, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, is is it a possibility to, because we're paying for the process now to also, and this is a question, I think, more for the city manager, but is is that, uh, we we have had this conversation. We've been told that we are going to align it with the districting conversation. And so we're having the districting conversation now. And I'm wondering how we can save money at a later time um by having a potentially alternative um design should this item go to the voters at a later time?
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman Mason. Let me just restate that to make sure uh for for both myself that I understand uh and for the public. So I I did your saying uh two things. One is, we are currently undergoing a districting process to draw four council districts. Through this process, should the city council ever decide to go to five districts, is there a way or would it be advantageous to, through this process, draw four districts and draw five districts as a way to potentially save on time and and resources should that change be made? Uh, question two, I I I believe, is what is the precise process to come to the conclusion that five districts is more compliant with the CVRA, the California Voting Rights Act, than four districts? Is that, is that, is that a fair summary of of the two components of your question? Perfect. We'll take in the latter one. Um, I think we need to investigate that more versus providing on-the-spot response to that. Certainly, looking into, as Kristen Park said, uh Measure F from nineteen seventy-seven and how that was placed on the ballot and what that means uh with respect to compliance of the California Voting Ri- Rights Act, we can look into that and provide the the California Voting Ri- Rights Act. We can look into that and provide the, the council with a clear understanding of, as we're going through this process, should the city council desire to look or to adopt five districts? Can that be done through this process? Uh, and, and/or because of how measure F was adopted, it has to go back to the voters. I think if that's a question, we can do the work and provide a, a, a clear answer to the council on that question. With respect to the other question, which is, we're drawing four maps. Uh, would it save time and money to, to draw five maps through this process, um, potentially? Uh, but I think that's also related to the, to the, to the, to the, to the first question. Because it would only be save resources if we were converting to five districts now. Because if you convert to five districts later, be it November twenty-four, then you have to draw your maps based on the data that's available at that point. And so I don't know that converting this process from a four district process to a five district process to save on resources would, would be advantageous if that change happened later. And so for both of those questions though, I think i- if, if that's a question that, um, uh, the, the council wants us to delve deeper into, we, we can do that. Um, to, to provide clarity on that. It's just important to note that we launched this process, um, looking at four districts. Uh, but if there's a, if there's a desire to delve further into, is there a possibility through this process to look at five districts, we could certainly do that work, uh, and bring that information back to the city council.
Yeah, or, I mean, is it a, is it a quote unquote safer, um, not to get so simple, but route to select five districts now? And have the five districts moving forward. We had at one time discussed five districts. Um, we had also, um, talked about, because if I remember that conversation correctly around the mayoral issue, we, we all agreed that nobody wanted to spend, um, much-needed city money on a special election. And that if this item would go to the voters, which it needed to, it would have to go next year. Um, and that would align with the districting. And so, um, not putting the cart before the horse, but really wanting to plan this out because what I don't want is I don't want to get to next year. And now we're not going to move forward on any potential, um, changes on the districting because now we're going to be spending another hundred thousand dollars for a new, for a new district map. So I think the conversation had, had always been that we were taking these into consideration as we moved along. And I don't want to cost the city more money on, you know, for, for poor planning on our part, uh, up in, up in front. At the front end of this project.
I think that makes perfect sense. I would just put, put a pause on it until we know what is legally possible. I certainly wouldn't want to engage your, uh, residents in your community on, you know, concurrently thinking about, you know, here's the maps with four, here's the maps with five, unless we're sure that there is a way forward with the five prior to no, the, the November twenty-twenty-two election. So we can circle back on that as soon as possible.
Yeah, um, and, and so the mayor, just in, in response, uh, to Councilmember Mason's, uh, question on timing, um, the city decided in two thousand and twenty to convert t- to district elections in November twenty-two. And so now we're beginning that work. The conversation that occurred earlier in this year, um, was can the city hold a special election timed with the gubernatorial recall to put the question of a directly elected mayor before the voters? We were preempted from doing that due to how the recall process unfolded and our ability to put something on the ballot. We did receive a quote from the county that putting a special, uh, holding a special election just for the city of San Bruno would cost approximately five hundred thousand dollars. And the decision at that time was to not move forward due, due to the cost. Uh, and so we then proceeded with the district elections process under the current format as per measure F, directly elected mayor for council districts. The question that's being asked now is, is there a way through this process to look at five districts? And should there be a map for five districts created? Is there a way to do that conversion prior to the November twenty-twenty-two election? So that it is five districts, not four, that, um, that, that are created. And that's the question that, um, should council wants to investigate that issue, we will certainly investigate it, uh, and bring back information to the city council.
Yeah, I think the second part is definitely new. I don't, I don't know if the first part is new, but the second part, I think, i- is new given that it sounds like, um, there's a cost associated to looking into this at a later time. And I think they really should run parallel tracks. Um, oh, that, that would be my thoughts on that. And then just another question, um, and then I'll turn it over to my, um, colleagues, but it's just on the, on the jail, the San Bruno jail. So San Bruno jail has quite a, uh, has, has a population in there as well. And I am curious to know how the jail fits into the, this districting. Um, you know, I, I haven't even, I don't think, so I might, I'm sorry, city manager, I'm putting you on the spot, but are they included in the census as residents of San Bruno? Um, and, and how are they a part of this entire districting process?
Yeah, no, it's actually a great question. Um, when we're talking about California's adjustment, we are talking about California adjusting our state prison inmates and, um, those incarcerated in federal prisons. Folks who are in jail, in county jail, are usually, um, so they're, of course, you know, realignment, but usually they're there uh, for less than a year and they are not counted there at the jail. They are counted at their place of residence. So if that place of residence is in San Bruno, then yes, they'll be counted there. If they're currently incarcerated in the jail, but their home address is elsewhere, they will be counted at that home address. That is my understanding.
Can, can we just, um, confirm that with the city, maybe, um, city attorney?
Yes, I'll look into that and report back, absolutely.
I believe Councilmember Mason has concluded. Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton, then?
So, um, I came into this meeting with si- similar questions about how, how this process works along with the, the, um, potential for rotating there. Um, I, so I won't cover all that ground again because it was just covered. But, um, I do have one, the, one question regarding if that question were to be a- addressed after the twenty-two election, it was mentioned that we would have to go back and use fresh data. I thought the census was done every ten years. What fresh data would be available? Are, are we talking about all that other stuff like, um, uh, uh, potentially residents coming, saying that there's a particular community that they want to keep together or whatever? Is it that, that, that non-population-based data that would force a
Yeah, two, two things. Two things. So the census data you would be required to use if you're doing this at any point again in the next decade, the total population numbers you're going to use for population balance will be the twenty-twenty census. However, the U.S. Census Bureau does an annual survey called the American Community Survey. And that is where we, they, what they do with that is they combine it into like a five-year rolling data set. So if you did this two years from now, there would be some, uh, perh- perhaps minor changes to the demographic data in the sense of, um, where your citizen voting age, population, race, ethnicity, renters, homeowners, all of that extra stuff that comes from the American Community Survey, that is updated on an annual basis. However, for the purposes of drawing the district boundaries to be equal in population size, that number will not change until after twenty thirty.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. Uh, I would concur with, um, Councilmember Mason that trying to avoid going through this whole process twice, um, not just, not just for the expense, but for the effort, for the, for the community, um, uh, to redraw everything, uh, and, and doing everything, you know, doing the entire process again a year from now or further is not ideal. And if there's a way that we can figure out how to get all that data now, um, and, and figure a path forward, given, given what the, the previous direction has been, I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina. You're on mute, Marty.
Thank you for that. Uh, I apologize. Um, just for the record, I, I, I do agree with, uh, Council, Councilwoman Mason and Councilman Hamilton. If there was a way that we could proceed and not have those expenditures in the future, I'm, I'm in favor of that. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other, uh, Ms. Parks? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar.
All right. I was, uh, I was playing around with the map. I got a little, uh, distracted there, but I, I just had a quick question about the maps themselves and, um, it, it's, um, I see that they were drawn with what looks to be, um, some census tracts, uh, some census tract borders and they got the numbers in there. And, uh, it seems like the city pretty well divides. I mean, if you were just sort of a quarter it out, it would kind of give us our, our ten thousand. So it seems like there's a pretty even distribution of voters across the city. Um, and looking at the map, so if we were to try to do something more creative with this, um, can we assume that there is a pretty, um, uniform distribution of voters across all of the blocks within those census tracts? Would that be a fair something now?
No. So what you're looking at, um, so the census counts all the way down to the block level. And if you're looking at those paper maps, um, you know, we can't print on a, on a letter-sized piece of paper every single census block, right? Um, but there is large variance, as you can imagine, right? As there are parts of the city with apartment buildings and parts of the city with single-family homes and parts of the city with nobody at all. Um, so that is varied block by block. Uh, what you're looking at are collections of, of city, of blocks, right? Um, for the most part here, these are collections of multiple blocks. The blocks tend to follow the streets. So when you can see where the street, but not, not a hundred percent of the time, right? Maybe like eighty percent of the time they follow the streets perfectly. Um, so each of these population units that NDC has drawn, um, we draw them in a way that tries to make it easier for the public to get an, you know, an estimate. But certainly the public here, they don't have to draw based on the, these population unit lines. They do follow census blocks, but keep in mind that each of these units here is a collection of census blocks and the number of voters. Oh, well, the population, right? We're not, uh, looking here at the number of voters, but the population does vary from block to block. Uh, in, in some areas quite significantly. Once the online tool is launched, you'll be able to drill all the way down to the block level. Again, I'm crossing my fingers with that this week. Uh, we'll see, but yeah, you'll be able to drill all the way down to, to that block level, uh, so that you can, you can fine-tune your, your district map to the, the smallest pro- possible, you know, geographic unit, which is
Okay. Yeah, tha- that was my next question is then will the tool allow us to do that? And then the tool, I, I imagine will also, uh, give us a total for an area that we define so that we know that we're approximating.
Exactly. It automatically calculates it for you. Um, the tool that you're getting, District Art, is my favorite tool. It's very, very easy. No account is required, no login. Um, you literally will point and click to, to select and you can point and click to deselect. And it will automatically give you information. So I generally tell folks, you know, you can use Google, Google Maps, you can probably use this tool. Um, and, you know, keeping in mind that, for instance, what you see here as the cemetery with, with, I don't know why there's twenty-five residents in it. I was trying to figure that out by looking at the satellite view and I'm going to have to dig back in. That's one entire census block. So I don't know if that's twenty-five people there, differential privacy, or, or, or if they're on the boundaries there. But that is a whole block, right?
Right. Yeah, I noticed the high school too has four hundred and fifty-six, but it also includes a little piece of the neighborhood that's adjacent to it. So it's, uh, kind of an interesting geography there. Okay. Thank, and, and so my, my other question too was looking at the, um, at the, um, population maps, the ones that, that were focused on, uh, the ethnic distributions. And it really doesn't look, um, like just based on those maps, I would say that there is no one geographical area that, um, we could identify that is somehow, um, disadvantaged in, in the, um, in, in terms of, of setting up a voting district. And even if you look at the concentration of, of Hispanics or Spanish-speaking people, they might be in an area, but they're such a small portion of that area that their votes still would possibly be diluted within a, a district unless you get very granular. So I'm wondering, after going through this exercise, um, is there still a potential that somebody could raise an issue that even with the districts, they're not granular enough? And that we're not, uh, meeting the letter of the law, which is to really provide, um, those people with, with equal access?
Yeah, well, there's always, you know, we can't prevent people from trying to, to bring, uh, lawsuits. However, what we are experts in doing is creating, um, maps that are defensible in court, right? And NDC of, of, for the, the three or four decades we've been doing, we've never had a court strike down any, any of the maps uh, that, that we have, have drawn for our, our clients. So that's a good thing. Um, and we are very mindful of what, of how, you know, what the requirements are. Um, in terms of, you know, if there is a po- a possibility to draw a majority-minority district, making sure that that is something that's considered, but also if there is a concentration of, for instance, Spanish-speaking folks in one area, uh, that we're not splitting them up and, and, you know, having them be in three different districts so that they really can't organize as a community together. And that's really part of the heart of the discussion of community of interest is, um, a community may want to organize. They may, may want to organize, uh, for the betterment of, of, of their area or their neighborhood. And, and we want them to have the opportunity to do so effectively.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Mason.
Um, I think those were great questions from Councilmember Salazar. I, I think, um, just along those, those questions, have you seen in the work you've already done in other cities an actual change in representation after districting?
Yes, yes. Uh, there, there often is a, a change in representation after districting, yes. Um, I don't, I don't have a quantification of that, but some cases, yes, and some cases, no. But yeah, oftentimes, yes. Particularly when you are drawing majority-minority districts, oftentimes you do see a minority, uh, member elected.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I, I think it just, it's just you're enha- it's like you're enhancing the opportunities for people to run because it's, it is a lot less, right? You're dealing with a less populated, you have less population that you have to pay for flyers and such. But I do get concerned about the unanticipated consequences of that if there aren't other measures taken to ensure that there's opportunities still for individuals to run, um, you know, and representation. And so I think, um, you know, we'll, we'll have to see how this plays out as we move forward here in San Bruno. Thank you.
Yeah, and I always tell my clients that, you know, when I was teaching political science, I would tell my students that, you know, uh, drawing these district boundaries is, is only one, one small part of the representation, um, puzzle, right? Voters also have to, you know, we look at citizen voting age population, um, but you have to make sure that those eligible voters are registered to vote and turn out to vote and that you have people running for office. So, um, you know, uh, we need to ask folks that in our community that we think would make good leaders, we need to ask them to run for office. We know that women and, and people of color and minorities often don't run unless someone asks them. So, um, please ask people to run for office, ensure that your friends, family, and neighbors are registered to vote and turn out to vote, right? All of that is beyond the scope of what I can do for you as your topographer.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no, uh, further hands, I want to thank everyone, um, for being here this evening and thanks. Okay, seeing no further hands, I want to thank everyone um for being here this evening and thanks. Sorry, um, city manager.
Yes, Mayor, uh before we leave, I just wanted to confirm uh city council direction because I I do think I heard three council members request that the city look into uh a five district map option and um its relation to uh measure F. And is there the ability through this process for the city council to consider five district maps? And um in the comments, I I heard a majority of of council members say that I just want to confirm that because uh staff will take that as as direction. In addition, uh the the other thing uh request that was made was for the city attorney to clarify uh how the jail population is counted uh for these maps. And so uh I just want to confirm from the city council that that's uh clear directions and the two takeaways uh from the state.
I would concur with your takeaways and I'm not seeing anybody else saying otherwise.
One one addition is that for the maps and also for the census, how they're counted. Thank you.
Okay, um, did that last uh caveat, city manager, make sense or okay?
Yeah, I think Councilwoman Mason was referring to by the them, the jail population for both the maps and the census, how they're counted, okay?
You're correct. Okay, uh, looks like um there's direction and uh thank you for this public hearing. Appreciate um our our folks that gave the presentation again, we appreciate it. And uh thank you to staff. And so with that, being no further business, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M via Zoom. Everybody, enjoy the rest of your evening.